Anything else? All right. At this point, I'd like to give it over to our city manager and let it take away. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Ms. Mayon. Testing now? All right. I'll make my opening comments brief because we do have a full agenda. You might remember last year when we did this, almost the same time, I think we were maybe two weeks later. I think we were here for five and a half hours, almost six hours. We did have some more material in the opening session. We brought a facilitator in. So we're doing it this time in three hours. So we will fill the time. There's a lot of material to go over, so I won't have a long introduction here. But I will say, just to underscore what the mayor said, public comp, there will be a break halfway through, 10-minute break. There are lunches provided for the council that you can grab at your leisure, bring them so we can keep working. And then after the break, after is when we'll go into an exercise of each council member being able to go through their priorities and then collectively working as a group, come up with a priority list, a council priority list, that is then given to staff. And we will take that list and come back to council at a future council meeting and give you the work plan and our implementation plan for what you have made important. The only other comment I want to make is on the listening sessions, I just want to just acknowledge how well they went this year. Last year was my first year. I think the listening sessions were very good last year. And so not taking anything away from last year, but this year, they were just very, very robust. We had three listening sessions. We had a packed house at all of them, really. There were no awkward moments, really. There was no time where we had to, you know, do a tap dance or tell a joke to get people going. The community was engaged. They had a lot they wanted to say. We had a variety of topics. And so there will be a summary of the listening sessions. And I was just really blown away at how robust the three listening sessions were this year. So that's my intro. The mayor already went through kind of the schedule for the day. The first up today, and we did a little bit of this last year, we're going to do a little bit more this year because we think it's very, very important to start with a benchmark of some financial forecasting before we start to go into our wish lists and priorities and all the awesome things we want to do for our community. Always good to start with looking ahead and, you know, what can the city reasonably afford and what does that forecast look like? So I'm going to turn it over to Lisa and Ken, who are sitting over here to my right. And they're going to spend about 15 to 20 minutes on a five-year financial forecast with plenty of time to take your questions on this, since it's kind of a hot topic right now. Lisa.
Thank you, Bob. Mayor Eisen and council members, thank you for letting us come today and talk to you about our current status and some projections that we see for the future. Before we begin, I'd actually like to recognize my staff who worked on this. Both Kenneth Stiles and Brian Lopez, our new budget analyst, with their help, we put together what we hope is informational. And of course, at the end, we'll be prepared to answer any questions for you. So I'm going to turn it over to Ken, who'll kick it off, and then we're going to take turns in the presentation.
Okay. So this is just a recap of what the budget is for this year. Broken down, these are our revenues. As you know, 75% of the city's revenues come from three main sources: sales tax, property tax, and TOT tax. TOT is about 40%. Property tax is about 20%, and sales tax is about 17% of our revenues. It's important to recognize that, since TOT at 40% is generated by tourism, and tourism also funds a portion of our sales tax. On the expenditure side, this is broken down by department. The thing to highlight here is that 3.1 million was allocated for capital projects. Outside of that, the departments are decently evenly distributed. The most is public safety, at 4 million, and 3.1 for public works. So we spend more of our money as far as with the sheriff, contracting out for officers on the street and maintaining our roads and infrastructure. Another way to look at it is by category. 26% of our expenses are for salaring staff, and 40% is for contract services. That 5 million, the red portion, is transfers allocations out, so capital funding are in our pension, mostly, most of it. So that is for this year. As part of the budgeting process, we have to start thinking about next year and the years after that. We have a five-year forecast. The blue line is our revenues, flat between this year and the next, while slight decreases. Now, the assumptions used were based on historical information, as far as TOT is at 4% per year. Most other revenues are at 2%, and sales tax is based off of our consultant and their The orange line is expenditures. You can see that our expenditures are exceeding our revenues, creating an operating deficit. Now, the high disclaimer with this chart is that this does not include any of the effects of COVID-19 or any recent economic developments. It's important to show council that, and the community, that this is already what our base is.
So as Ken mentioned, TOT is the city's number-one revenue source. It is about a 5%. It's averaged increased about 5% over the last three years, as you see from the chart that was prepared from our consultant that assists us in collecting TOTs. We included both hotels and the STRs, as they are now, as you see, increasing year by year. They definitely do contribute to the economic vitality of Half Moon Bay, and it's really important that we take notice of this and talk about what happens when things start to change. Oops.
SPR.
Oh, short-term rentals. So, oh, go ahead. Wait, that's in wrong order. That's wrong order.
So as mentioned before, our base scenario does not include COVID-19 or any economic downturn. While we were researching the potential effects of COVID-19, we had found that the thought from the financial firms that have teams economists, they initially thought that the first two quarters would see a dip of about 4%, and then the last two quarters were even out, while those reports were about a week old. And a lot of things have since changed since then. So since more and more information is coming out, we figured that it's better to take a more simple assumption at this point. So we did what happens at 5% decrease and what happens at a 10% decrease. So that's our base projections. That dotted green line is what happens to our revenues at 10%, and this is at 10% for all revenues. And that blue line is what happens at 5%. So the gap widens based on the decrease. I don't have that in front of me. I can...
About a million.
Right now, and in rough terms, 10% is about 2 million, and 5% is about 10%.
And for reference, in the 2009 financial crisis, the major revenues dipped about 9%.
Unfortunately, I think a few of our slides didn't show up on the PowerPoint that's in front of you, but in the printed version. We wanted to talk a little bit about financial considerations, and especially now with the COVID-19. I'm going to go off script a little bit here. Where even, although a recession is uncertain, we are thinking that now it could occur in the next few years even more so with what's going on between the stock market fluctuation, COVID-19, and of course, anytime there's a presidential election, you see a fluctuation in the economy. Our city's revenues, as Ken pointed out, are very heavily reliant on tourism. And with one-third of the revenues coming from TOT and a majority of the TOT generated from one property, we are looking at what that possibly could mean to the city if dips in revenue continue to happen, and they can happen due to economic, environmental, and now pandemic concerns. And from what I've read, in California alone, the down, tourism is expected to be down 28% just as of today or as of yesterday. But so, moving forward, with other cities now shutting down, such as in New York, there's a city that just shut down its boundaries, we're just kind of living day-to-day, seeing what is, what's happening to our economy. Some of the things that we need to consider is obviously looking at revenue sources. And if our TOT is, if it does decline, additional revenue would be needed to keep Half Moon Bay running at a functional level, including making sure that we're able to pay our sheriff's patrols and the sheriff. Additionally, revenue that we can find outside of either TOT or tourism would help in our response, in our emergency preparedness. But in it, and looking back, we also have to, we also have to realize that our, any revenue that we gain from tourism is a way that outsiders who come to visit our wonderful city are contributing to our financial structure. But moving forward, if it does happen, we do have a contingency reserve, which is now at 30%, and that is the standard for that, which we created back in 2011, and a pension reserve, so that our employees' future is also safe. We are actually funding, just a side note, our pension right now is funded at 70%. So we are doing a lot better than most cities when it comes to CalPERS. In addition, last year, the city was really prudent in establishing an economic uncertainty reserve. And that's the slide you see here now. The fund was created to have 20% of total operating budget allocated, and it's currently funded at 12%. So we're still building the fund, and it authorizes staff to transfer unallocated fund balances to the reserve at the end of each fiscal year. So this is a fund that we would use to cover in preparation for a recession, to make sure we stay stable and that our expenditures and revenues stay equal. This is the fund that we would go to. However, in many discussions, we've also found that we would recommend, as often, I mean, as much as we can stay away from using it until it's fully funded, we would always recommend moving forward in terms of putting more money towards it instead of taking out. And also in terms of figuring out what constitutes the basis for using this fund, which that will be our goal in the next few months in developing a policy so that it's very, so that we can bring it to you, so it's very clear on what circumstances we would use this fund. So that's our financial forecast. We're sure you have some questions for us. I apologize for the slide mishap, but...
Could you explain to the audience just briefly the difference between our economic uncertainty fund and our emergency reserve fund?
Yes. So what we call our emergency contingency fund, that's for our operations, that is, that has been mainly put aside for an emergency, such as an earthquake, an economic disaster, a true disaster in the sense that the city loses complete revenue, and we need to survive on what we have in that reserve. The economic uncertainty fund is to help us move through a recession. So that, and that's going to be part of the policy development, because we needed to suffer what's truly just a bump in the road and a difference between what we're bringing and maybe a slight difference in revenue versus a true recession where we need to pull from this fund to make sure the city goes on operating. But the contingency, emergency operations contingency fund, is truly when an earthquake hits, like such as a 1989 scenario, where we have businesses shut down, there's no tourism at all coming because of roads and closures, and that fund will help us stay afloat until we can actually get the city back to working order.
And Ken, if you could go back to the slide, the graph where you show the two scenarios, the 5% and the 10%, I'd like to just underscore a couple of points that I think are important. So, and they actually kind of build off of that question that Councilmember Penrose just asked about the differences between the two reserves. So the points I'd like to make, I'll start before looking at the 5% and the 10%...
Testing?
Testing? Okay. Before looking at the dotted lines, the 5% and the 10%, which are just assumptions, just, you know, for sake of discussion, I want to just start with the blue and the orange line, which alone, before any kind of a downturn, should catch your attention. Because they're already showing that we're going to move into a structural deficit. And so that should catch your attention. And so I just want to underscore, and if you look at the numbers really quickly, it's probably about 800,000. So that, we've, the city has been kind of moving in that direction, I would say, at least over the last two to three years. And when I got here, I looked back at the budgets and saw that, you know, it was starting to move that way. The reason it's been masked, I would say, to some degree, is in, over the last couple of years, we've had, we've had savings that have occurred during each year. So again, this structural deficit is predicted at the beginning of the year. Here's, on July 1, the revenues we think we're going to have, and here's the budget we set. But we have not, in each of the last few years, been spending all of the budget. And so at the end of the year, we're to the good, and that goes back into the pot, and that kind of masks, then masks this phenomenon that we're moving towards this structural deficit. So for example, there was significant vacancies over the last couple of years. And so when you have, we always budget at top step of a vacancy or mid-step of a vacancy, and then if that vacancy isn't filled, you save that money because you budgeted for it. So that's just one example of how we can then end the year to the good. So that was a phenomenon that was happening. At a peak, we maybe had, you know, 10 vacancies, you know, after I arrived. And right now, we're essentially full. So that masking effect that we were receiving from that is, may go away to some degree because we have filled all our vacancies. So that's just one example. And you can see that Lisa and Ken made the mid-year presentation last council meeting, and you might remember that they showed the prediction right now is we're going to finish this year 650,000 to the good. So that phenomenon is continuing, but the message here is it may not continue like that. And so the first question, before we even look at the five and the 10-year scenarios, well, we obviously by law have to, have to recommend a balanced budget. So what do we do right out of the gate for 2021 to address that? Well, the first thing we look at is our capital. Well, first thing we look at before we look at capital is putting money into the reserves. So again, we're trying to build the reserves. We would still like to add to the pension reserve. We would still like to add to the reserve for economic uncertainty. It's at 12%. We'd like it to be at 20%. If we can do that, we will make that recommendation. But that would be the first thing that would go. And then next is the amount of general fund we commit to capital, one-time expenditures. And last year, we had the luxury of being able to commit over $3 million to capital. And that was a blip because we had several projects that were getting to the construction phase, the expensive phase of the project, and we wanted to see these projects through, and we had the money to do so. That would be the first trigger that we would start to cut down. And because that's a discretionary, that's a discretionary decision the council makes, and we can certainly stall capital projects and not contribute so much to capital. So we have levers that we can pull as we go forward, as we get close to June, so that we deliver a balanced budget. So I just wanted to show that, and all you're seeing is obviously straight-line estimates there for those two lines. Then looking at the next, the five and the 10-years. So great question from Councilmember Ruddock, what does that represent? And you can see the 5% is about a million, 10%, is about 2 million. So in that same thinking, we have these reserves. And a very good question, what's the difference? And there is differences, and we'll color that in a little bit more when they bring back the policy within the next few months. But if things snowball, obviously, and you have an economic downturn, and you have a virus, and you have, you know, as events continue to snowball, obviously, there's interchangeability between our reserves. We have to pay our bills, and we will dip into our reserves if that's the necessity at the time. And so at some point, worst-case scenario, you got the 30%, which is different, and the 20%, but at the end of the day, as we, you know, we will have to use those funds, worst-case scenario. As we start to make decisions on how we bridge that gap to avoid going into the reserves, obviously, it gets trickier and trickier as we kind of set the priority list of where you make cuts. You don't contribute to the reserves, that's first. You start, you start, you know, pulling back on capital expenditures. You start making cuts to the departments, and they start making choices. You freeze, you freeze new hires when the negotiations come up. We would then establish an order, and we would present that as things that we would do as a situation got more dire. So all this is, all this graph is showing, we're not providing solutions here, we totally get that. It's showing a scenario and starting to help us to plan. I mean, it's kind of the same thing that you're hearing in the news about the virus, don't overreact, don't panic, but plan accordingly. Same thing on the financial end. Don't overreact, don't panic, but let's start to plan accordingly. Could this happen? Yes, this could happen. So we need to start thinking and starting to put those options together, how staff would recommend making cuts in a very deliberate, methodical way to avoid the worst-case scenarios, dipping into the reserves, not being able to pay our bills. And of course, one of the last things in the order of how we address cuts is layoffs, obviously. That's, that's way down the list, and that's what we want to avoid, and that's one of the reasons we recommended creating the reserve. So I just wanted to underscore what's going on when you look at this picture. Not providing solutions yet, but it is supposed to catch your attention. That's right. Any other questions on this? All right, cool.
Are we going to talk about increasing revenues?
That's much better. Apologize for that. Booming now. The three, the three main taxes that you saw that Lisa showed, sales tax, property tax, and TOT. And yes, we are, and we're going to get into some recent survey work that we've done. It was directed by the council a year ago at the priority work session to look at ways that we could enhance revenue. That's the other side of the equation. So with that, if there's no more questions for Lisa and Ken, we'll shift, and I think we're about right on time, we'll shift to the next item on the agenda. Matthew is going to go through kind of the process, not so much the process, but the priorities that were established last year to get the council thinking, okay, what is it we did last year? Why did we establish five priorities? And that should then get us to start thinking about how we develop priorities looking forward. So Matthew, go ahead.
Thank you, Bob, honorable council members. I'll make this brief. I presented something very similar to this two meetings ago, and so the updates obviously haven't changed significantly, but I think it's just important for the community and for yourselves to have this as context as we think about our priorities for next year. So as you know, each year, we hold our annual listening sessions, and they culminate in this meeting, which gives you the opportunity to talk about what you've been observing over the past year or past several years, what you're hearing from the community, what you're hearing from staff through our meetings and our discussions, and really think about what those priorities need to be going forward. And we include those priorities in our strategic plan. There's a URL there if anybody's interested in looking at that. And as you know, we're doing work to improve the way we present that information, so it's really clear to the community and to yourselves what's happening, what staff is working on, and how we're making progress towards these priorities. So in fiscal year 2019, 2020, the four priorities that you set were affordable housing, emergency preparedness, traffic and traffic demand management, sustainability, and a local minimum wage. And here is just a little snapshot of kind of the progress. The dark green are work plan pieces that have been completed. The light green are areas where we're still making progress. You know, we're about, I don't know, two-thirds of the way through the fiscal year now, and so we're making significant progress on a lot of these. I think what you'll find as we talk is that the ones in light green tend to be ones that they weren't, we didn't expect to be finished with them this fiscal year, but we make significant progress towards them. As you can see, under affordable housing, the specific items under the work plan have all been accomplished, and all of those are geared towards the ultimate goal, which is to provide more affordable housing to families and individuals here on the coast. So under affordable housing, the work plan included developing a plan to, one, utilize the funds in our affordable housing fund. We've had several million dollars set aside for affordable housing for several years and no real process or policy to distribute those funds. That plan has been put into place through your efforts and through work with our community development department, and we've identified some options to replenish that fund, because that's a fund you want to be revolving. You want money going out to stimulate new projects, and then you want those projects and other commercial projects to bring additional funds back in. The first distribution out of that fund was more on the prevention side. We used $300,000 to help fund the Workforce Development Center for Abundant Grace on Kelly Avenue. And of course, the purpose of that is to prevent people from becoming homeless and to help those that are homeless get into housing through, mostly through work and getting into the workforce. The second item on the work plan was to research the concept of community land trust and how it might work in Half Moon Bay. That information was presented to you early this fiscal year, and although it is an effective tool in some areas, I think it was concluded that in Half Moon Bay, that's probably not the right option right now, but we're going to continue to track that. And as that changes, it may be something we bring back to you for further consideration in the future. And then tenant protection measures. As you know, the state passed legislation this year that provided some sweeping tenant protections. We provided some additional work on top of that to further protect our tenants here in Half Moon Bay, and we're hoping to see that those efforts keep more families in their homes and give more security and stability to people living here on the coast. their homes and give more security and stability to people living here on the coast. For emergency preparedness, the main focus for this year is to update the city emergency operations plan. We have one in place, it's updated every couple of years. It's developed in conjunction with the county and really mirrors the county's emergency operations plan. With discussions with the community and the council, we've determined that the city really wants to dig in on this and develop a more comprehensive plan that's very specific to Half Moon Bay. With all of these, we've had some delays on this particular item this year. One, the staff working on it became very involved in responding to the public safety power shut-off events in the fall, and with vacancies in that department and multiple duties, that staff was working on other projects. We've now staffed up the admin services division. Emergency preparedness has actually been moved into the city manager's office to allow a greater amount of focus by staff working on it, and we're starting to make progress on these things and hope to over the next year. The emergency operations plan, I think the biggest update is that we're working with our local government collaborators, the fire protection district, the county, the office of emergency services, the school district, to start structuring and framing out what that plan is going to look like for the coast side. And then, we're really going to go out and engage all the different groups. We have a lot of volunteer groups, a lot of community groups, and a lot of nonprofits that, that work within these areas that can help us frame that plan. And then, we also want to get out to some of the special community member groups in the community, working really closely with the seniors. We know that's a highly vulnerable population in an emergency, and we have a concentration of seniors living in the senior facilities on Main Street, but we also have seniors distributed throughout the coast side, and so, that's a population we really want to engage with and make sure that we've really thought through everything we can do to support them in that plan. The Spanish-speaking community has really expressed a concern about not feeling informed and involved in that planning, and so, we're going to be working closely with the Spanish-speaking community to make sure they're aware of what they can be doing in an emergency and how to protect themselves and their families. And then, I think the schools and the youth are another area we're going to put a lot of focus into. Along with the emergency operations plan, we'll be developing disaster-specific plans. So, the emergency operations plan really helps the city to figure out, in an emergency, who do we call, how do we organize them, how do we operate the EOC? The disaster-specific plans really get into details. They get into if there's a fire up in the hills, how do we react to that? If there's a tsunami coming from the ocean, how do we react to that? If there's been an earthquake? And so, this is the level of detail we hope to get to over the next year with the help of the community, to really get people comfortable to know, one, that we've got a plan in place, and, two, it's communicated community-wide, so people know what to do. We're also going to be continuing to operate the EOC for exercises that allows people to practice those techniques and be ready. You can prepare all you want on paper, but if you don't know what to do, you don't have that muscle memory of, here's what happens when I go into the EOC, or I go out into the community. It can, it can be hard to react in an emergency, so we want to make sure that staff and volunteers are prepared. We're also preparing for a second coast side preparedness day. We're looking at scheduling, especially based on what we're hearing in the community about big events and getting communities together. So, we're working closely with the county to figure out the best timing for that, but it was very successful last year, and we want to see it go forward this year. And then, one of the, the easy wins for us is we're going to be, over the next couple of months, conducting CPR training for all city staff, so that we are, as first responders or as emergency disaster workers, we're not first responders, the first responders are the first responders, but staff are disaster preparedness workers. We can be more effective if we've been trained in CPR and being able to help the public. Yes.
Just wanted to mention that we have also started our medical reserve corps.
Yes.
Could you just address that quickly?
So, I know that the medical reserve corps is something that existed in the past, and it's medical professionals that organize to provide services during an emergency, and the county's really put more emphasis on that again, and we'll have a chapter here on the coast, and this will be one of the key groups that we'll engage with as we're developing the emergency operations plan, because, obviously, having, our isolation requires us to have medical support that may not come from over the hill, it's got to be here on the coast, so that'll really play a key role in that work. Thank you. So, traffic and transportation demand management, the first thing is to develop a strategic plan that is well underway, and you've received updates from public works staff. This is really looking at how traffic moves through the coast side with our existing improvements, and things we can do to make changes, not only to how we move traffic, but to how our improvements are built, so that hopefully, we can alleviate the traffic issues that we face here, especially during high tourist seasons. Along with that, there will be regulations that will be developed to memorialize some of those decisions that are made through that strategic plan. Then, we'll also implement the actual capital and transportation, or the bicycle and master, pedestrian bicycle master plan projects related to TDM. Some of those are already underway. You know that we have the Highway 1 North and Highway 1 South projects that are being designed to help alleviate traffic going north and south from 92, and give people other options than just sitting in traffic, you know, diverting people down Main Street at appropriate times, or sending, helping people know that they can go north and south as opposed to everybody clogging 92 on those busy days. You've seen changes to signage and traffic lights, especially around the Highway 1, 92, and Main Street corridor, and we've seen positive effects from that, and we've heard a lot of positive responses that that actually has made a difference. And then, physically, the sheriff has augmented on those busy weekends, actually getting people out there directing traffic and really using their expertise to get the traffic moving the best way and prevent some of the poor driving decisions that people like to make in those high-traffic situations. So, we've already seen, I think, some really great benefits from this plan and the work that we're doing, and we hope to continue that as we move forward. And then, of course, collaborating with CCAG and other regional transportation agencies to find additional ways to get people around the coast and to and from the coast. Sustainability has been something we've talked about for a long time, and this year, we made it a priority. We funded a position focused on sustainability, and that position's been filled, and she's doing great work, bringing her expertise, and Public Works has really been able to put a lot of emphasis on this effort this year, especially around the climate action and adaptation plan. As you know, we received a grant from the county, and that's allowed us to work with some of our important populations that need additional effort and focus as we educate and receive inputs, so, working with the seniors, the Spanish-speaking community, and the youth, and you received an update on that recently, and that's been a really effective process, and I think is opening doors for engagement across all types of work that we do. I think it's been a really good tool to build those relationships and an effective outreach to those groups. The green infrastructure plan was approved, and we're implementing that now, and we're in the process of, I believe, we're looking to hire a consultant right now to develop this sustainability strategic plan, which will take over six months to develop, but will really guide us over the, the next several years and into the future, not only for the city, but for the community and our businesses, how we can all work together to make this a more sustainable community. And then, we're always implementing projects within our CIP around sustainability. And then, the fifth priority, of course, was minimum wage. You directed staff to research and determine if a minimum wage, a local minimum wage is something we can implement. And as you know, last month, you adopted the ordinance, increasing minimum wage in Half Moon Bay to $15 an hour, and that will begin January 1 of next year, and so, staff is working on implementation tools and outreach tools, so that when that time comes, we can really get the word out and make sure that our businesses have the support they need and the information they need to roll it out properly. So, those are our current priorities. As you can see, minimum wage is kind of wrapped up at this point, and we'll just be implementing it. I think the other four, you see, there's a lot of great work happening, but a lot of work to do still as we move into the next year. And I think when we met last year in this meeting, it was kind of the expectation that some of those would be multi-year plans because of the dynamics and the amount of work that goes into making some of those things happen. Bob, did you have something you wanted to share?
I did.
Oh, okay. Any questions from you about the priorities? Again, I know you've received several updates, so this probably isn't new to you, but hopefully, it's good context as you think about the priorities moving forward.
Yeah, thank you for that update, Matthew.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next up is Jessica Blair, and she is going to go through the results of some survey work we did recently. Councilmember Penrose asked a question about looking at ways to increase revenue. Always very important, part of our job, obviously, to look for ways to increase revenue, because with increased revenues, we can provide more services to the city. So, a lot of the focus of this survey work that was done and is going to continue to be done, and Jessica will get into that, was to kind of get to the, get out to the community and ask them questions about how they think the city is doing, and what services do they like, and what would they like to see more of, and what's important to them. So, it really dovetails well into our, our annual approach of having listening sessions to hear what the community wants before you make your decisions. But it was both, it was intended to be more focused, a very scientific survey work was done, and it was to really get at that, so then, we could start to make decisions about, okay, if that's what's important to the community, if they want more of this and more of this, how would we go about raising revenues to fund those things? And so, with that, I'll turn it over to Jessica.
Thank you. As the city manager mentioned, the city conducted a community survey in December. We contracted with a research firm, and the intent was to gauge how residents are feeling with a variety of issues, as well as how the city is doing in general. The interviews were conducted via phone and online, and we had 311 participants. A random sampling was used, and there is a 95% confidence level of these results. And, so, the first question was, how, how do you think the city is doing, and are we headed in the right direction? And 46% of the respondents did say yes, the city is headed in the right direction. Next, they were asked, how do you view the city government as a whole and the city council? 61% approved of how the city government is operating, 54% approved of how the city council is operating. They were given, the residents who were interviewed were given a variety of issues, and they were asked to rank them in what they felt were the most extremely serious problems facing Half Moon Bay currently, and the least serious problems. The top three were traffic congestion, the cost of housing, and coastal erosion. You can see that the next few, evacuation routes in an emergency, people experiencing homelessness, quality of public schools. The least serious problems are on this slide. Crime in general was ranked as the least serious problem facing Half Moon Bay. Waste and efficiency in city government, 30%, potholes, 26%. So, out of these issues, again, the top three are traffic congestion, the cost of housing, and coastal erosion.
And Jessica, if I could just jump in too, because some of this might be tough for people to see. So, the colored categories you see are in the, are extremely serious problem, the next one is very serious problem, then somewhat serious, and then not a problem, and then don't know. The percentages on the far right are the first two categories. And so, that's, and then, they were listed, as Jessica said, from most serious all the way down to least serious, when you calculate those first two responses, extremely serious and very serious.
So, as you'll see for traffic congestion, 75% of respondents felt that it was either an extremely serious or very serious problem, so. And then, again, down 19%, crime in general was, I think more importantly, 43 plus 35 thought that it wasn't that big of a problem here, so. Respondents were asked whether they approve or disapprove of the job that the city is doing in managing tax dollars. 48% either strongly or somewhat approved, 32% somewhat or strongly disapproved, 20% didn't know. And, when asked if there is a need for additional funding, three out of five respondents did say that there is either great or some need for additional revenues to the city. Let me know if I'm going through the slides too fast, too. Respondents were given, there's three slides of issues, and when asked whether they're extremely important, very important, somewhat important, not too important, not too important, important, or don't know, these are ranked based on those who responded that they were either extremely or very important. So, you'll see that the top three issues of the 311 respondents were reducing local traffic, reducing local traffic congestion, protecting natural areas and open spaces, and maintaining the city's financial stability. There is, the line at the bottom, the text is missing, that was improving sewer infrastructure. And then, on the next slide, there is one line missing there, that was affordable housing. And so, these are kind of the middle-of-the-road issues based out of the items, the issues that respondents were provided, and on the next slide are the least important issues, and you'll see the bottom three, repairing the community center, maintaining landscaping on street medians, and upgrading the sheriff's substation. So, of the respondents and these issues provided, those three were seen as the least important. So, as mentioned, 311 residents responded using random sampling. We are inviting the entire community to join the conversation, and we have placed an online reduced version of the survey on the city's website, hncity.com/followupsurvey. You can also get to this page, which is hncity.com/jointheconversation. We have included information in our newsletters. We've included the link to the survey in eNews. We placed postcards in the most recent issue of Currents, and in the rec guide that will be going into mailboxes soon, there is also a letter signed by our city manager that includes a lot of the same information and invites residents to take the online survey. So, we do invite everyone to let us know how you rank the top issues that the survey respondents ranked, and we'll put all of that together in the coming weeks and months and present that to you again. With that, are there any questions?
An easy one, Jessica. What percentage of the survey respondents responded?
I actually don't have that data. Let me see if it's in the first slide. Do we know?
Yeah, I'm not, we do not have that information, but remember, this is different than a survey where you send out the survey to everyone and then get a response rate. This is, this is a scientific random sample, and sure, they can call someone, and that person says, "I'm not interested in the survey," but then, they call another person. And so, to be statistically significant and get to a 95% confidence level, they have to have a certain number of people respond based on the size of our community, and they accomplish that. So, so, what's more important is that the sample size was large enough to get to a 95% confidence level that this represents the views of the entire community.
In, in doing the survey, how did they account for our population difference, where we have 32, or whatever it is, percent Latino population? Were 32% of the people chosen for the survey Latino?
No, it was, it was random. So, again, back to the 95% confidence level, statistically, I believe this is what the polling expert would say, since they did it in a scientific and random way, the conclusion would be, and they don't, you know, they don't know who's on the other end of the phone, the conclusion would be that it did represent, to a 95% confidence level, the diversity of the community.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Just a comment. So, basically, this information is best evaluated against, like, the listening session information.
Correct.
So, we're trying to get at these issues many different ways.
Correct.
And, we have to look at the total picture, I think, so.
Yeah, and Karen will be presenting next on a summary of the listening session results.
Let me just, before you, you go there, but I do love the fact that we are gathering information from multi-sources, presenting it to council beforehand, and then, coming up with our priorities, as opposed, you know, it's, it's, it's great to have... with our priorities as opposed, you know, it's, it's, it's great to have multiple ways to reach out to the community and receive input and use that towards our priority setting. So I just appreciate you guys taking the time to do it.
Thank you. So next up, Karen Decker will present a summary of the three listening sessions. And so with that, Karen.
Thank you, Bob. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members and members of the community. It's a pleasure to be with you here today and I'm here because we just concluded our 2020 listening sessions, which it's hard to believe that just 48 hours ago, we were setting up for the third one. So this is fresh off the press and I, I can assure you that there will be further analysis in the days and weeks to come, but we wanted you to be the first to know as this is a great segue into our priority setting workshop. So as Matthew alluded to before in Empire Presentations, these sessions lead up to this workshop, which, you know, of all the competing priorities that are important to the community, all the hopes, all the needs, what rises to the surface for this time and place? That's really what we're here to reflect on today and how will that shape the budget? How will that shape this year's priorities? And so the sessions give people an opportunity to meet with you directly and for those who are not comfortable or who are unable to attend in person, they're always welcome to submit comments online and more on that later. So we held three sessions this year and I won't read the logistics. You can see where and when they took place, but I did want to take this opportunity to really highlight our community partners. The venues, I think, were highly successful this year. The first one on February 27th was hosted by senior co-siders and I have to really give a shout out to Hope and Sandy and they not only provide their space, but they provide their time. They put a lot of thought into accommodating the needs of the community and enable staff to kind of capture a captive audience based on their existing programming. And I really have to credit a lot of that to the successful numbers that we saw at that first session. The next session, just two days later, was held at the Half Moon Bay Library and like many people, I just can't say enough about the library. Annie and Francisco and the whole crew over there are so accommodating and meeting community needs, whether they're twirling their carts at the Fourth of July or Night of Lights or, you know, hosting for a job fair on the heels of Bay City and their development. So just can't say enough about them and their support. So just a quick, a few highlights I want to bring to your attention and this is all also in a draft summary report that's made available to you today. In terms of attendance, our total attendance exceeded 100, which we were really pleased about because last year we held four sessions and this year we only held three, but despite that, we increased attendance by 50%. And I think for some, some of that was for reasons I named earlier. Anecdotally, we don't record that information. We want to make it as just welcoming and, and as possible for participants, but just observationally from staff, we had a large turnout of middle-aged adults and a lot of representation by seniors. Youth participation was down compared to prior years and young adults are historically underrepresented at our listening sessions and that does not go unnoticed by staff. So we have thrown around the idea of potentially holding an upcoming session, you know, next year and in subsequent years for transitional age youth, which is 16 to 24. We have a strong partner in YLI, we have our future leader, Leaders Civics Academy, so I think it's well within our bandwidth to explore that if that's interesting. In terms of translation, at the request of senior co-siders, we did something a little bit different this year and we offered Mandarin language interpretation, which was available at the first session and I did see a handful of folks taking advantage of that. Spanish language interpretation was offered at the middle session on that Saturday and then the March 9th session was held in Spanish with interpretation available for English-speaking council members and staff and community members. And we would gauge about 20% of participants took advantage of that translation. And then finally, in reflecting back on this year's listening sessions, one of the main challenges that we face is around scheduling and I think that a large part of that is because we're trying to employ best practices in terms of community engagement, meeting the community where they are at, literally and otherwise, at times that are convenient and in, in methods that are convenient for people to come. And so in doing so, that doesn't always sync up perfectly. We would love to have 100% council attendance at all of them. We fell short, a little short of that this year and we're aware of that. And so we're just going to continue to assess that and we're willing to evolve our outreach and logistics strategies in order to best accommodate the community needs. Okay, so jumping into some of the content, so there were many, many themes that emerged and topics that were raised over the course of those three days and Appendix B, your second appendix, lists those in terms of the raw notes that staff transcribed at, at staff discretion, but you'll see some of the main topics that rose to the surface and they're listed alphabetically here. And I just want to point out that affordable housing and emergency preparedness and traffic and sustainability, which are, have asterisks on the slide here, are all existing council priorities for fiscal year 1920, which you're well aware. Affordable housing was not as prominent a theme at the first two sessions compared to the third Spanish-speaking session, but continues to main, remain relevant in the community. Traffic as a contributor to congestion and inconvenience came up predominantly in 2019 and traffic came up again this time as well, but it was framed slightly differently in the sense that there were correlations made between traffic and potential safety issues like evacuation routes or bicycle and pedestrian vulnerabilities as they relate to traffic. So same, you know, noun or same theme, but, but a slightly different lens. Really pleased to report that last year we had a few online submissions, this year we had 23. We had 90 visits to the city website feedback page as of yesterday morning. And with a few exceptions, all of the online comments focused on a community aquatic center with varying opinions about location and process, process meaning just the path forward, you know, there were some opinions about an existing pool or renovation versus a new one, things like that. There was also strong representation for recreation and an aquatic center at the third listening session, I believe. So in conclusion, four of the council's current priorities appear to remain relevant to the community, but as I alluded to earlier, they may be viewed through a slightly different lens or focus. I had mentioned examples about traffic. Another one could be emergency preparedness. This time last year in 2019, we were still coming off the heels of several California wildfires. You know, there was talk of preparation in terms of tsunamis and earthquakes and while that is all still very relevant and very possible any day, there has been so much that's happened just in one year since that priority was first set. Matthew mentioned the public safety power shut offs that were very relevant in late summer, early fall. Of course, communicable diseases is at the forefront of everybody's minds. And so with that said, there's the opportunity to not abandon our current priorities, but pivot accordingly based on real-time needs. And so as the community reports what's important to them and as you make those considerations, staff stand ready to adjust also, okay, to meet those needs. So I realize that I'm standing between you and the break, but I did want to see if Bob wanted to say anything and I wanted to open it up in case you have any questions.
Any questions from council members? So we're actually, I, I have no additional comments on the listening session, but I do note that we're maybe 10 to 15 minutes ahead of schedule. So we have a couple of options here. We can take a longer break. We could start taking public comment right now if, if people are not ready for a break, but then I would suggest if we do that, if there are some people that show up at 12:30 or thereafter, we would give them the opportunity because some people might have scheduled their time that way. Or we could take a 10-minute break now and get started early. So what's the pleasure of the mayor and the council?
10-minute break and start early, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, we will take 10 minutes and be back at 20, 25 after.
They're being turned in right there, perfect. Bob is going to grab them right now and we'll start public comment.
Joaquin Jimenez?
Take as much as you want, Joaquin.
There you go. Hello, mayor, city council, staff, members of the community. I want to say, first of all, you know, thank you for the listening session that we had in Spanish. I think we had a great turnout. We have actually, from that meeting, more people are interested, you know, in coming to listening sessions. The thing is there's a miscommunication in our community, information that comes out the outreach, you know, for the sessions. And I really appreciate, you know, making sure the, or Sunday service, when I interfere with the listening sessions, because as you know, a large percentage of our community is Catholic and we attend church on Sundays. So thank you, Victor. He was a, he, we, we did good, we did good. So one of the things, you know, that I want to talk about is, you know, affordable housing, you know, is that it was probably the top priority, you know, on a listening session. From that, you know, sustainability is the next thing, you know, about community. I think preparing our Latino community, Dr. Penrose, you know, you, you, you did ask that question about, you know, when the survey was done, when it was completed, you know, what percentage of that survey was actually Latino? You know, so we need to make sure that we, when we make our decisions, we look into our Latino community, you know, and then that's something, you know, that has been happening, you know, and we know that, you know, you know that we know that, that it's been happening, but we do need to prepare our community for emergencies. As you know, you know, we are very involved with the community or group, you know, here and the co-site, Latino Baseline Council, ALAS and other organizations, very involved. So we want to offer, you know, or help, you know, to make sure that we do the outreach, the proper outreach to prepare our community. Emergency preparedness, we have the trainings in Half Moon Bay. Last year, you know, we had a, we haven't had it this year yet, but you know, we want to. We want to make sure, you know, the coronavirus scare that's going on right now, you know, believe it or not, Latino community really, we're not really scared about it. We're not really concerned, you know, about, you know, making, we're not making a big deal, but we need to be prepared, you know, anything could happen in the next few months, anything could happen, you know, some of the events have been, have been canceled, you know. So there's several things, you know, that we need to inform our Latino community about what to do in case of, you know, and I, and I think we have a pretty good platform to be able to do that. You know, we have a, we have the, you know, Moonridge Housing, you know, available, that we can do presentations, we can do trainings, we have the Main Street Park, we have the public library, you know, we have the, you know, this, this center that we can actually do. So please let us help you, you know, do the outreach so we can, you know, get a, you know, a good number of attendees, you know, to, to our presentations and our trainings. So let's see, traffic, you know, traffic is one thing, you know, that we want to start, you know, looking into. Evacuation out of Half Moon Bay, you know, I believe, you know, we can actually set up some, some of information onto the Latino community, part of the training, you know, about what to do, what if we have to evacuate Half Moon Bay, especially Moonridge, you know, as we know, 92 is only pretty much the most possible way to go out of Half Moon Bay, but we also have Highway One to go into San Gregorio, North Side of the evacuation. So, you know, but we need to inform our community about that, you know. I don't think, we haven't, we have done, you know, that much of it, of the informing our community. So preparing them, promoting, you know, riding our bicycles, you know, I think that alleviates, you know, a bit of traffic, you know, walking within, within walking distances, you know, promoting, you know, walking, riding our bicycles, you know, in our Latino community, actually will be, be to a benefit, you know, to, you know, to be able to do that. So, you know, we can start promoting that, you know, be a great thing. Public transportation is one of the things that our community needs, you know, moving out of, going over, over the hill. A lot of Latino community, we don't have, we don't have our vehicle to move out, you know, out of the area. So promoting that, schools, as you know, the school district is on a, you know, is going to cut the bus services to some of the, some of the schools, Fairland View to be exact. So public transportation is a need to, for students from coming out of Moonridge. With this coronavirus thing scared of coming and coming, coming around, you know, I think we have to look into the events that we're coming, be coming into the fall. As you know, October, it's our, our best month of the year, as I mean, I like to call it best month of the year. So we have, you know, the, the events. Do we have the proclamation, you know, the city and the school district about the Latino in our heritage month, September 15, October 15? So we'd like to promote that, you know, the proclamation in the, in the community, the city of Half Moon Bay, as well as in the school district, you know, to work together, you know, so hopefully, you know, be, you know, a good time for us to celebrate and come together, you know, because all the things that are happening, especially, you know, around affordable housing, that is, you know, it's a, it's a great thing that we really own our community. So we have celebrations, the pumpkin festival and then on November, Dia de los Muertos, you know, make sure we focus, you know, some of the events that will bring our community together. I don't know about Fourth of July, you know, it's really, it's, it's pretty much on top of us. So, you know, yes, preparing for, you know, to prevent some of the illnesses coming around, but also please keep in mind, the Latino community, we would like to participate, we want to participate in being informed and receive the training as well of what can we do, how can we help? You know, we are 32 to 35% of the, you know, Half Moon Bay, so we do need more information about what's going on in the training. Thank you.
Councilwoman Penrose?
One of the important things in emergency preparedness, Joaquin, is that what we've discovered is it, it's, begins in the neighborhood. It doesn't come down from the top. There is no way in an emergency for everybody in our city, no matter whether they're Latino or Anglo, to get the information that they need. It has to come from the ground up. So CERT training is what's going to be critical in the Latino community as it is every place else. We're now starting neighborhood groups so that there'll be a neighborhood block captain who will know everybody in their neighborhood through a street captain. So each, each street will have somebody in charge of knowing all the needs on that street. There'll be, there'll be things that people do during an emergency, they'll put signs in their windows saying, I'm okay, or they'll put a sign up, oxygen needed. There are a lot of things that can be done, but it has to be begun at the neighborhood level. So you've got to encourage the Latino community to participate in CERT training. That's where it's going to come from.
Yes, actually, there is a training called Listos.
Yes.
That is CERT, no, in Spanish.
Yes.
We want to make sure that we promote that.
Yes.
So I already did a, I did, we did a training in Pescadero with the farm workers. So we want to bring that to Half Moon Bay. I don't know if it's been brought up yet, you know, haven't heard about it, but we would like to make sure that it's offered to our community. And like I said, you know, we are here to help as well, you know, to receive the training and assist with the training. And we do have, as you know, our Latino Baseline Council, we are located throughout Half Moon Bay. So we have our members in Moonridge, Main Street. So, we have our members in Moonridge, Main Street, Quijote, Tijuana, that we would like to call, you know, what's it called, the Pilarcitos Street. So, we do need this training and we like to assist. So, please do let us know, because we, our community needs, you know, the CERT training, Listos. So, that will be, we'll be better prepared. Thank you.
Crystal Lynn Geet, followed by Michelle Dragony.
Crystal Lynn, Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce. So, first, Joaquin, there is a chamber committee called KEEP. That it would be great if you guys could join us, and emergency preparedness is all we talk about. And we can connect you with Coastside CERT, which does have Listos training. They recently got a grant that helps them with that. Making the connection. Thank you very much. So, I'm here advocating for, on behalf of the businesses, primarily the downtown businesses, that would like to have some signage directing people onto Main Street from Highway 92 and Highway 1. A lot of this stuff has been in discussion for quite a while, so we're excited to see those things move forward and help get over any roadblocks that might have been in the way. And something that kind of actually just popped up this morning is plan for Corona, or whatever it's called, COVID-19, economic impact recovery. So, there might be businesses, like some of our hotels and some of our shops, that are going to be very hard hit from people staying home, or even buying more online than they used to, because they don't want to be out in the community. We've already had quite a few hotels say that their March revenue is going to be a little scary, because larger corporate groups are now canceling, actually due to policy, not specifically being worried that they're going to get sick on the coast side, but they've just have a company policy that they're not doing group stuff. So, something interesting that I saw San Francisco do is they've now are petitioning their city to just allow people to pay some of their fees a little bit later this year. So, maybe sales tax, TOT tax, and obviously, based on our size, some things are more feasible than others. But just to get the ball rolling on thinking, and as we talk about budget, it might be, if there's a little extra money somewhere, it might be nice to put some of that towards economic recovery. A lot of our smaller businesses, especially in downtown, are shoe, shoe string thin budgets. So, if they have one bad month, that could be the determination about whether they stay or go. So, I think that's all I could think of at the moment. So, thank you very much.
Michelle Dragony.
Hi. I went to the listening session on Sunday, and I was talking about the pool, because I think we're really close to getting it open this summer. But they wanted to know a little bit more about disaster prep. So, I mentioned Listos, it's a four-hour program that's in Spanish. We have a fire captain, Robert, who, Santos, I think his name is, he did the training. And we're ready to do more training, so I'm really excited about that. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak?
All right, thank you. Thank you for speaking up. We are moving into the priority setting exercise. Pass it over to Bob, and talk through this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with a few opening comments. It says, "Provide staff recommendation." I don't think we have a specific recommendation, but I'll throw out some ideas and thoughts that I have, maybe just to guide the process. Last year, we came up with five priorities. I guess my first recommendation would be, I think that feels like a good number. So, as we're, after we put them all up there and start to have a conversation and synthesize comments, you know, if there are thoughts about, well, you know, how many priorities should we have? You know, should we have less, should we have more? I think staff generally feels that five's about right. So, that's my first comment. My second comment is, is kind of obvious. Out of the five priorities we had last year, only one was, was more of a project. One was, was one that we could start and finish within a year, and that was the minimum wage. And so, we did get that done. The other four, obviously, are ones that, if the council elected, they could probably be on our list for a long time. They could be on for two years, five years, maybe forever. Affordable housing, you know, maybe the day comes, if we, you know, if there is a huge downturn in the economy and, and the housing market adjusts here, that all of a sudden, the community might start to feel that housing is, is not the challenge it is today. But that, that might not be for a few years. And so, it's one of those ones that could be on there for a long time. Likewise, with emergency preparedness, I, we could probably argue at some point that, not to diminish how important it is, but at some point, we could probably make a recommendation that it's so institutionalized into what we do, that we're going to be doing all the right things and prioritizing it, even if it's not on your list. I don't think this is the year to do that. We are working on the Emergency Operation Plan. It's a very important exercise that could take six or eight months. And not to mention, right now, of course, we have an epidemic that some people are starting to call a pandemic. And so, it's pretty easy to make the argument that, you know, that, that could be, that, you know, that's a priority right now. But it's, it's an example of, at some point, you can, you can take certain things off the list. It doesn't mean that we don't work on them anymore. It just means that other priorities have risen up, and like I said, we've institutionalized them to the point where you're comfortable them not being on the list. The other two, again, you know, they could be on there for a long time. The idea of, of operating in a sustainable, sustainable way is a transition, I believe, that, that, that the city, the county, the nation, the world are going to be going through for a long time. And so, that is, that, what sustainability means and what actions can come out of that are going to evolve, and that could be a priority for a long time. On the other hand, we could get to a point when the plan's done, we're doing really well, we're doing all these great things, we're leading in some areas, and the council might say, you know, it's all happening, we've institutionalized it, we want to put something else on the list. So, I just wanted to make those points, that it seems like, you know, we have four, and I guess traffic transportation's the other one. You know, I guess what could happen there is, so much is kind of out of our control with solving major traffic issues. There's certain things we can do, but at some point, you know, a year from now, three years from now, the council might say, you know, we've done a lot of cool things, but, but there's always going to be traffic, and so, it's not that it's not important, but we want to put something else on the list now. So, I don't know if we're at that year yet. Those four, I could see, you know, I don't want to bias the process here, but it seems like those four did come up in the listening sessions, and they're probably still relevant. I would argue that it is nice to have the type of item that you can get done in one or two years. And again, I'm not suggesting that if you come up with another item, that's long-term, that's not, that's not bad at all, that's fine for staff, we'll, we'll take that. But it, but it is nice, and maybe, and maybe we can do five priorities and then one special project. But it is nice to have a quote-unquote "project," something that's really important, and, because we have lots of projects, there's lots of projects in the CIP, and those are going on. But constantly, new ideas are coming to us, and we have to, as staff, we have a capacity, and we have to work on what we can work on, and communicate to you when we're at capacity, and when we're at that point where, okay, you guys got five great ideas, but we can only do one of them, let's slow down a little bit. And so, if there is, if there, when you put your things on the board, you know, put up everything. I mean, don't just put up what you think the five should be, put up everything. Projects, programs, quick wins, little things, because we want to categorize everything. And not only do we want to get to your five priorities, but other things might be able to be handled different ways. Like, okay, that's a project, we'll put that in the CIP. Okay, that's, that's easy, we can do that in two weeks, it doesn't need to be a priority, on the priority list. So, don't shortchange yourself, I guess is my other recommendation. You know, you know, dump your brain when you get your chance to go up there, put everything that you want, and we'll synthesize. But those are my comments. Five feels about right, five plus maybe a project is about what we can handle. Whether you choose to keep the four that are on the list, that's up to you. Whether you want to add another long-term program, that's up to you. We'll see how it shakes out, and, and we'll decide how we can accommodate everything you put up on the list. So, those are our recommendations, and the process that we want to follow is, as I just kind of alluded to it, we're going to give, we're going to give each person five minutes, or you can go up at the same time, I suppose. And, and, well, we have scribes, we're going to, let's, I think it's better if we, no, I think it's better if you verbalize them, the public can then hear, and we got our scribes to do it. So, we, we have, we have Jennifer and Julissa up there, we'll go one at a time. I'll let the mayor run that and decide the order, and they will write under your name all your priorities. So, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Any clarifying questions before we move on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm...
I think that's a great idea. Are you guys good with that? Start off maybe two minutes, we'll get some stuff up there for each one of us, and then we'll start discussing as a, as a council. You good with that?
Yeah, but just a process check. Because we're talking about priorities, but then all the elements of each priority. So, most of the projects come under a strategy, strategic priorities. So, distinguishing between the two, I mean, at some point, if we see we're having the same four or five strategic priorities, then it's a matter of sorting those subsets, which inevitably, there'll be quick win projects and others. So, I just wanted to...
Agree.
Yeah. No, I agree, I agree completely. And I think, generally speaking, most of us will probably come down on at least a couple of the same priorities pretty quickly, and then we can start getting into the rest from there, so. Deborah, do you want to start?
Sure.
Couple of things come to mind. One is emergency preparedness, even though it's in the works and constitutionalized or institutionalized, or whatever we call it. My sense is, until we get down and dirty in the neighborhoods, we're not going to get anywhere. That, that, the top-down approach is wonderful, we need it, we need a hierarchy, we need to know who's going to be in the EOC, who's giving orders, who's taking orders, what are the different jobs. But, it's going to start at the neighborhood level. And I went to our second downtown meeting, there were five of us there. That's not enough people to do diddly squat. And my sense is, if the city could somehow contribute, and I'm, I'm not sure how. One of the, one of the ways, one of the concrete ways I thought they might help is by distributing walkie-talkies. People can communicate on a street with a walkie-talkie system. The walkie-talkies communicate with each other, and they go to the central hub, which is the ham radio. The ham radio talks to the other ham radios, and they all talk to the EOC, which talks to the county, which talks to the state. You got to start at the ground level. So, one thought is walkie-talkies. The second is an enhancement of our neighborhood block party idea, where we encourage people to have a neighborhood block party around the idea of emergency preparedness. And then the third thing that I want to say is, I just want to make sure that we are basing our emergency preparedness on the worst-case scenario. That we are talking about no use of Highway 1, inability to use Highway 92, no help from over the hill, no help from the local hospital, no fire trucks coming, right? The worst possible case scenario.
No EOC.
No EOC, and that, and no shelters available. So, we've got to really start looking at, what is the worst-case scenario, and getting people prepared for that. So, I hate to say that, but I think that's critical. It's one of the lessons we learned from Paradise. They did not do worst-case scenario, and it was a disaster. Another issue that I care about is downtown revitalization. And I know that we just got a wonderful grant that will help us to do a study on, on what we need to do downtown. I'd like to see us look at our San Luis Obispo study and include that when we do any planning, because a lot of that groundwork was already, already done. Some great ideas came out of that. Affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing, affordable housing. So, that's, that's all for right now.
That's an excellent start, thank you. I want to call you doctor. Are you Dr. Warback? What's, what's your, what's your?
I have a PhD.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Doctor, it just sounds good. Yeah. Councilmember Warback.
I'd rather be called councilmember, thank you. I have a list here, and I wanted to add one major topic to make the fifth priority. But my first priority is affordable housing. And I have this list that starts small and ends very big. Starting small, I never heard about the fact that we had these 12 units that had been deed restricted behind shows. And from what I understand, the, that's no longer, they're no longer deed restricted and affordable. And I think that's a loss, and if there's any way that we can get the city to do right by the people who thought they were getting affordable units, that would be nice. The second item about affordable housing, we just came back from this conference where we learned a lot about what other cities are doing for affordable housing, and one thing that struck me was, a city is giving grants to people who are going to build ADUs with the provision that they make restrictions for keeping the ADUs affordable. I thought that was a very smart idea. People automatically think ADUs are affordable, they're not. They could be, they don't have to be. But I think by having the city involved in making sure that people who want to build ADUs can do it with a grant, as long as they have like a 10-year restriction to rent them at affordable rates. That, I think, is a good idea. Last September, the council was more or less told that we had to transfer Measure D allocations from the downtown to outside the downtown in order to support all the requests for Measure D certificates outside downtown. I am very strongly in favor of making sure that we promote our downtown core and affordable housing, and housing in general in the downtown core. So, I want to go on record as saying that come September, I'm not going to be in favor of transferring any Measure D certificates outside the downtown core. I think we should keep the downtown core vibrant. I think we should try to support as much affordable housing as possible downtown, and that's where I'm coming from. As I said, I'm building up here. The biggest thing that I would love to have happen, and I'm sure everybody's sick of me telling you this, but I would love to build a three-story apartment house in the downtown core that's affordable, that's restricted to people who live or work on the coast side, that is something that the city... that's restricted to people who live or work on the coast side, that is, is something that the city can leverage some of its affordable housing fund, that we do whatever we need or can do to build this affordable housing place so that we reduce the outflow of people who can no longer afford to live in, in Half Moon Bay. And I, I think it's important that we try to get as much housing as possible. Since we're talking like $30 million, it's not a, a small little deal. But it's something that I think we really should, as Bob was saying, think big. And if at all possible, try to leverage what we have, try to get the philanthropic interest, affordable housing interests. There are many different sources of funding. It would be nice to get some land near the downtown core to do this. Anything that would actually get these units built is something that I definitely favor. Then along with the idea of affordable housing is the light of homelessness that we've experienced. San Jose has just built a bunch of tiny homes to house on a temporary basis some of their homeless population. I think one way or another, if we can get a shelter built so that homeless people can get in, out of the weather, it would be wonderful. It would be the start. We, the city is supporting the Workforce Development Center, which is good. But we really need to show that the city is compassionate and will try to get some shelter for people who refuse to go over the hill where there is county shelter that's being offered. So that's, that's my contribution to about affordable housing. I'll come back on a second round for other things. Thanks.
That's a great list, Mr. Rhabak. Thank you. Councilwoman Vedic, yeah.
So I, I think the, the big categories still are, you know, pretty useful and helpful to us. But I've been thinking a lot about emergency preparedness and sustainability sorts of issues. And I've come up with like three sort of broad concepts that are important to me. And I call them community power, I mean, community energy, basically. Community food, which would be our community garden program, and community healthcare. So it's always been important to me that Half Moon Bay not just be a bedroom community that accesses most of its services, you know, over the hill, but that we become as self-sufficient as we can and as resilient and sustainable as we can. So to me, that means looking ahead and evaluating opportunities for either like micro grids, power grids, or some other, maybe there's an interim solution of, of batteries or something. But I think we need some sort of initially a backup energy power and then try to source as much of our power locally as we can. And there's, I think, many different routes to that. But I'd like us, I'd like that to be a priority because I, the way things are headed, you know, I think we, we want to control as much of our resources as possible. We've started down the path of creating a community garden, which I think is, is great. And trying to incorporate the resources at the Johnson House for that and potentially introducing this concept into our neighborhood parks. I still stand by that and we're making progress on that, so I want to, you know, continue that. And then I'm very concerned about the loss of Seton Coastside. And, and actually, it's more than just Seton Coastside. It's Seton Hospital in Daly City. So another major resource that, that may go away. And, you know, we worked on this issue many years ago. Stanford Health was here for a while and left. And I don't know what the prospects are, but I think we need to be working with the county to make sure that some community healthcare remains established here as a resource for, for residents and tourists alike. Rather than just relying on air ambulance insurance to get over to, to Stanford if we need it. So maybe it's a center where we can do testing and blood draws. I don't know what it is, but I think we want to start that conversation. As for, for traffic, so three of us attended the Institute for Local Government Symposium in Yosemite this past weekend. And there was some really robust presentations on, on traffic and circulation and transportation. And there was a great presentation by Sandeg in San Diego County about what they've, you know, discovered after 20 years of looking closely at Dewey Widen Highway, five, 10 to 18 lanes, you know, what are we doing? And they've decided that widening roads does not solve any problems. And there were other people in the room who said the same thing. People are giving up on just plain old widening roads. And I think, I think that's a good idea. You know, as soon as you, like the EIR for Highway Five basically showed that as soon as the project was done, they would still be in Level F service, right? You just bring more cars. So I think we want to have a robust TDM program and bicycle and PED program and, you know, rely on that. And because of the roadways, I think we also want to focus on sheltering in place in emergencies, not worry about creating for the worst case, some widening of 92 to make sure we can get over the hill if there's a fire or tsunami, but that we become experts in sheltering in place. And I think Dr. Penrose also, you know, touched on that. So that was good. Affordable housing, of course, and that needs to, to stay on there. We, we also heard a presentation about Civic Spark, which provides fellows to help cities, you know, beef up various programs. And I, I think that, given that we might be going into a recession and that there are things we still want to do in the face of recession, that we start considering more seriously, you know, what I would call generally volunteer programs. You know, we want to have fellows and interns and community volunteers who can, you know, help offset, you know, some of our, our staffing costs. And there are, there are programs that help pay for that. You probably know of AmeriCorps, but there's also Civic Spark. And, you know, to help our existing staff with some of their workload. But I think we need to incorporate, you know, volunteers into the fabric of our city operations somehow. We're currently not doing that. I know there's probably insurance issues, liability issues, but I'd like us to look at that. I do support, you know, Jill has talked about, you know, town center plan and finishing the LCP. We gotta keep going in that direction. You know, part of our sustainability and self-sufficiency is having a robust and vital, you know, downtown business district and, and housing down there. So I think we were on a good track last year and I'm just trying to expand on the sorts of things that we might be doing under those categories and at least start thinking about and getting on our radar. But that kind of, that kind of covers it for me, I think, right now, anyway.
That's a great first blush. Thank you. Mr. Brownstone, the Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Gets easier as we get down to this end of the table because a lot of the ideas are already up there. So I might just add to a few things. So one thing is for sure, we want to give staff enough time to complete the LCP because that is a blueprint vision for what we want our community to look like in terms of everything. Downtown, traffic, roads, our hills, our seashores, protecting our coast side. So I just want to say, whatever we load up, this first, whatever we load up onto staff, make sure there's time in this first quarter, next quarter or so to make sure that gets done. Because we'll make a lot of the other things a lot easier because we'll have a, a reference point in place that we can look at a lot of the other projects. In, in terms of affordable housing, you know, it's interesting, you know, we'll talk, you know, the ADU piece about making sure things are reserved for the downtown corridor. There's always this interesting tension between providing housing per se and making it affordable. So where we put the ADUs does not necessarily make it affordable. It might keep the housing location-wise, but I'm always trying to keep that framework of, will it really make something affordable or not? So as we throw around those terms, you know, I know they get thrown around, will it stay affordable? I think, it was actually great this year. We had the state provide rent control and tenant protection pieces, which I think do affect affordability and homelessness. I think there's opportunities in terms of affordable housing to, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of grant money out there now and, and grant money from both banks. We've talked about Wells Fargo in the past, state money. And so next month, I'm actually going to attend a grant writing workshop in Oakland to get a better understanding of the process and then hopefully, you know, offer, you know, my services and time to the city to help with that because there's so much out there to try and figure out what works best for us. In terms of traffic, there's things that we've discussed in the past that I think, you know, the question is how do you incentivize people? For example, to carpool. We talked about park and rides. I forgot what that actual statistic is. If you get 5% of people to carpool, it reduces traffic 20% or something. Incredible result and impact. So I think some more education where we can do around that and figure out how to incentivize it. Also work with the school district on what might be done in terms of, you know, right now, they don't really incentivize at the high school ride sharing by having all those parking spaces. So if we can provide some alternatives and work with the school district, we might at least be able to reduce some of that traffic coming down from the high school. Also SAM Trans right now is extremely interested in improving its community relations and services, which I learned from commute.org. So a great presentation. We want to have more buses. We want to provide different kinds of shuttles. So maybe we can talk to them and see if they'll put their resources where their intentions are. And if we could take advantage of that. Emergency preparedness, I couldn't agree more with Councilmember Penrose. The action takes place in the neighborhood. I mean, if you're gonna shelter in place, you're gonna shelter in your neighborhood, not a mile away, right? So here's the good news. There are actually some incredibly good events taking place that we can duplicate. So I remember, I think you mentioned in your neighborhood, Councilmember Penrose, that only five people showed up. Okay, that's not a great result. But the good news is we have some neighborhoods because Coastside CERT is for the whole coast side. So here, within the Half Moon Bay limits, city limits, Frenchman's Creek has an unbelievably advanced CERT neighborhood program. So they've got block captains. And what they do is they have their own local emergency preparedness fairs. They did one in the park. They had fantastic attendance. They set up tables. They had games. You know, where you, when you throw the bean bags and, you know, all these things that might sound silly, but people loved it. And they gathered all this information, put as much in, we could put the information in English and Spanish translations. So that's been a great example. El Granada had hundreds of people show up at a firehouse a couple of months ago. Same thing. Showed people how to use ham radios, walkie-talkies, an incredible amount of information. So the good news is we have terrific models. The people from those neighborhoods are more than willing to help other neighborhoods. In fact, they're doing that with Miramar Neighborhood. They're sharing their resources. They'll bring all the games, all the equipment, all the stuff down. So I think the CERT program will actually, over time, really become our core emergency preparedness program because people will know neighbors who they can rely on. And when you have neighbors you can rely on and trust, the panic level goes down, right? You know, you'll know what to do. You have friends to ask. And, and yeah, we need more outreach to the communities that Joaquin mentioned. Moon Ridge, Main Street, Kehoe, Pillar Cidos. Get those groups involved. Make sure there's the right outreach to seniors. 16% of our population, 30% of seniors live alone. So we want to make sure folks who might not make it out some of these fairs, we get information and know who might need help in an emergency. Let's see. In terms of sustainability, yeah, I think would be great if we could get some grants on renewable, storable energy, batteries, et cetera. I mean, it could be done, but they're expensive. So if we can get the grants to get the money for that, so we can have that renewable energy at our fingertips would be terrific.
Robert, Peninsula Community Clean Energy is devoting $10 million to doing resiliency, micro grids, that kind of stuff. So that money, some of it is, could come to Half Moon Bay, just for your information.
So anything that's local should be top on our list, is I think what you're saying. Great. And let's see, anything else? And then last but not least, of course, economic development and downtown revitalization. I think that's something we've talked, all talked about. We'd like to start focusing on that. I think the focus on our heritage blocks downtown was a great start. I'm not always popular with everyone, but it's, fits our vision for our LCP. It's the right thing to do. We're talking about a few blocks that we could really focus in on, make them pretty, talk to landlords and figure out, hey, what are we gonna do about those empty storefronts? You know, we haven't, luckily, we now recently have a newly formed downtown business development group that we can leverage and speak to landlords. I love the idea of, you know, this town center and also was mentioned that San Luis Obispo plan. We have this great plan that we can go back and look at in terms of traffic patterns, closing streets down, and figure out what works for us locally. Great. That's what I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Brownstone. And then we can go back through again, of course, right? Yeah, we'll go back through multiple times, I hope. So when I, when I start to go through my priorities, you know, my, my generation, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go on to, is really, you know, sustainability is such a big factor of what we're looking at. You know, I was trying to keep the planet and overall lifestyle, you know, global warming, all the different pieces, trying to make sure that we pass on a good planet to hopefully our children and keep ourselves alive in the process. But I really, you know, and I, I think this council is very supportive of being a leader in sustainability. It's been one of our priorities for a while now. And I love the steps we've taken, although small. I don't feel like we've come to the, to the point yet where we are a leader in that. And I like to see Half Moon Bay as a leader in sustainability, as opposed to just kind of going with the flow. And I'm, I'm appreciative of what we're doing with the county and the way that the county's able to lead our first major push in sustainability and we're kind of following suit with that. But I would love to take the next step up and, you know, part of that to me is also branding of the town. And as, as I look at the branding of Half Moon Bay, I would like to be thought of as a community that cares tremendously about the sustainability and is looked at as a leader in that area. And when people come here, they know that this is a town that cares about what they're doing from a sustainability standpoint. I think that will benefit us in, in terms of tourism as well, which in turn translates into dollars from the TOT. And, you know, I sent an article recently, Lake Tahoe was doing some interesting things with sustainability. And I'm not sure, you know, I know we kind of bandied those about really quickly. But I'm hoping as all of us are out in the community as, and the community members themselves, but just keep bringing ideas back as we see other communities doing different things to look at what we can do as, as, as a community to be able to increase, you know, our, our really, again, leadership standpoint on the sustainability front. And if, sustainability to me also goes back to, you know, there were five priorities that, or four priorities that really stood out when we did the polling of the public. And coastal erosion was number three on that list. And I look at sustainability. And I look at sustainability also from that lens and I know we've got Debbie Ruttick working on the sea level rise committee. I forget exactly what the term is for that, but more or less. And, you know, so ideas that we can do to start thinking on that level as well as, you know, the inevitable sea level rises. And it was interesting when we were at the Spanish listening session, the, the listening session done all in Spanish, when we talked about sustainability, there wasn't much full understanding of what sustainability was. And then there also, when we talked about global warming, you know, there wasn't a high level of, I think we have an ability to be able to reach out to that community a little bit more on a sustainability front and make sure that we are, are educating everyone is, in regards to what we're doing. And then so some ideas to move forward. So we've talked about eliminating plastic bottles in Half Moon Bay entirely. I, 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 I think that's a, that's a great idea. You know, I'm not, I know that there's legal challenges involved and all the different things from, from that standpoint, but the plastic in our oceans is increasing at such a rapid rate and the oceans support Half Moon Bay from an economic perspective in terms of what we do from the fishing and crabbing communities as well. So to be able to keep that portion of our economy going, to show that we're leading the way somehow from that front as well. Another, some other things we talked about were, you know, I think we've got single use plastics, but then we talked about utensils, we talked about straws, we talked about glasses, you know, all the different things that we can do as a community to make sure that we are, you know, not, not utilizing, not hurting our environment in any way possible. I think we should, we should demonstrate that from also our level as well in terms of the, the products we use amongst ourselves. So that's, that's sustainability. Then in terms of traffic, so I like this topic as a, it's got to be one of our topics and I, I like the moves that we have made. We've made some significant moves with the, of the off of, off of Highway One onto 92, we increased that median or that, well, how do you, what do you call that? The, the buffer zone from one road to another. I think that's been helpful. We stopped the right turns off of Main Street onto 92 during business hours. So I think we started in the right direction, but I'd like to continue. And I can't believe, to me, San Francisco has done such an amazing job with their bike and pedestrian master plan and it is, it has been in the past two or three years. It's been, it's been unbelievable, the way that they've taken their streets and literally turned them into smaller streets and they've got a bike lane and the amount of biking that you now see in San Francisco, which is a completely different city and I understand, but my, my, my point being, you know, when we talk about like the high school and the traffic that goes into the high school, if we made it very easy and safe to bike up to the high school, which we don't really have any way of doing that currently, I think that we would hopefully see more people using bikes and that would change. But I would, I would love to lead from the thought process of build it and they will come as opposed to not. And so I would love to make Half Moon Bay a super biking friendly community in every way, shape and form. We have this amazing bike path on the trail and then being able to increase that through the city and through different streets and avenues, I think would be a really big piece on that. So again, I'm not sure how San Francisco was able to pull it all off and obviously different funding mechanisms and all the different pieces, but they, I mean, it's been two or three years and they've, they've changed the entire way people move in that town, in that city. And then the other piece on that is if you're on a bike, because I bring my bike to San Francisco now when I go, you actually move faster than you do than the traffic, like significantly and you know it and you're kind of like proud about it, you know? It's like, ah! And I feel like that same philosophy could exist going up to the school where, I mean, there's literally a traffic line always coming in and out. And if you saw people kind of going by on their bikes, there's electric bikes now, so people could possibly go a little faster on their way because it's a little bit of a hill up to the high school. Just throwing different ideas out there, but I would love to, to move forward with that. Redevelopment of the downtown or whatever you want to call it, I'm not sure what other people have called it so far, but that's basically the same concept. Absolutely is a must. I don't know how much this goes into, you know, if you can take our current coronavirus situation and roll it into this, I'd kind of like to, as I see and Crystalin talked about, you know, tourism is obviously going down right now. Stores that are on razor margins are going to be hurt. I would love to find a way to, you know, bring that up during a council meeting and discuss and just talk about what we can do as a city, as a town to help with that in every way, shape and form from just that perspective alone. And then rolling into even further, we just updated the signs on the streets and, you know, we have the, the black signs now, I think for downtown and the blue signs for the rest, you know? That's a small start of different things that we can do. I like the signs, somebody mentioned pointing to downtown Half Moon Bay. I think that's a possibility of some things we could do. And then obviously we've got the storefronts. And I'm not so sure about the, what's it called? The piazza? What do we call this up here? Right up, right up here on Kelly, right, right in front of your guys' town hall? Mac Dutra. Is it piazza? What is it? Plaza. Plaza officially. So that to me, although a fantastic project and I'm very happy it was done, has, has never hit home. And I'm not so sure what we need to do with, with that plaza to be able to kind of bring the life into it that I would.
Greening it up, yeah.
Yeah, greening it up, possibly adding the artwork. I think we've talked about it one point. Something is missing there. I don't know what it is, but I'm wondering if that could be like the quick, easier spot to start first in terms of redevelopment of downtown. I'm very excited about the project going on across the street where we're going to hopefully, the old gas station that was there, that's all fenced off, will hopefully be a project that happens in the near future and seeing that change because I think that will add to downtown as well. So different things going on with the redevelopment of downtown, but I'm, I'm excited about that. I, I would kind of like fold Carter Park into that as well, although I am cognizant and I think it's important to note that projects that are going to require a lot of money at this point are going to be more difficult, I would imagine. And so we almost need to lean a little further possibly on planning projects like the LCP, which was mentioned before, where, you know, we can still use the staff we have to be able to move those things forward as opposed to taking on a new project, spending all those funds. I think we need to focus, my sense is, we need to take a, we need to be wise about which ones we're going to actually try to spend money on as we have, I think, less money moving forward, but that's my own personal opinion on that. Affordable housing still needs to be up on the board, obviously, and I think everybody talked about that. And then, and of the ones that were mentioned by the survey contestants, just so we know, I mean, and it, yeah, yeah, contestants, whatever, thank you. They were traffic congestion, the cost of housing, coastal, coastal erosion and the lack of evacuation routes in an emergency. So that hits my last one, which is emergency preparedness. And obviously, you know, my, my main topics are affordable housing, emergency preparedness, traffic, sustainability and redevelopment of downtown. So just to kind of summarize, I think we're mostly in alignment with, with almost most of those and we can talk about the specifics behind those because I am of the mindset that it is good to come up with the priorities and it's also good for council to come up with at least some action steps of, of what we'd like to see because sometimes I feel like we put this out and then we get back to it later on and maybe only one or two things and we kind of sit there and we're like, well, wait a second, that's not really, we, we want more action on that. And I'm trying to figure out how we make that happen, but also knowing the demands that are going to be on the city and the different things. I'll, I'll leave it there and open it to council from here.
Yeah, I have more to say.
Councilwoman Rudd, Penrose?
Yeah. To that point exactly, one of the things that happened at last year's priority setting session was that one of the things that almost didn't get on the list was the minimum wage. And there was a lot of discussion at the very end of the meeting about whether we should have that on as a sixth or whether we should take off and, and it was between you and I a lot of it. And, and your decision was you'd be willing to go with minimum wage and leave downtown development off was the way it ended up, so that we ended up with five. I don't have any angst about the number of priorities we have. I'm sure the staff has a great deal of angst about it. I would like us to concentrate on two or three projects rather than look at these broad categories. We are doing, staff is doing tremendous work on sustainability, on traffic, on, on emergency preparedness, on, you know, on every one of the issues that we have, staff is already working on them. I'd like to see us accomplish a couple of things and I'll mention a couple of them. I don't know how important they are to everybody, but one of the things that drives me crazy are the empty buildings on Main Street. I think enacting some sort of a fining system or taking properties by eminent domain, making a decision that we're going to get rid of those empty buildings is an important thing that we're going to do if we're going to revitalize downtown. The other is something that Councilmember Ruttick spoke about at our conference in Yosemite. And that was somehow entitling, somehow putting together the entitlement on a property with a bond so that people who bought property or own property and say they're going to develop it, don't just sit on it and flip it. And, you know, I can look at how many properties, how many big properties we've got downtown right now, which are not being developed because they're not getting what? The money they want? Who knows? But isn't there something we could do at the outset to make sure that they get, that property owners have to develop once they get their entitlements? That there is a time limit on it or there is a fine if they don't do it or, or something? And I don't know what that is, but Councilmember Ruttick spoke about bonding it. I don't know how that works. You guys know that stuff, right?
Well, I'll just simply mention, and maybe Jill can jump in if I don't get this right. So an entitlement does come with a time constraint on it. So if, if a developer does not develop within a certain timeframe, they lose their entitlements. Now, there are rules to that. I'm probably oversimplifying it and they can get extensions and stuff, but that is meant to provide an incentive to not sit on entitlements and let them sit there for, for years and years and years.
But they're sitting there for years and years and years. They are in fact, sitting there for years and years and years.
I, I understand that we could go, that your suggestion is that we can go further and pro, provide further incentives or disincentives to force the issue and it's something we would have to think about, but I just wanted to simply mention that point. I, I realize that's just a starting point.
No, I, I understand that. I'm just, what I'm saying is, we don't have that much property in downtown. We are really limited. And what we've got is so important. If we don't develop it, we're going to be sitting here 10 years from now with these people owning this property and not doing anything. They're waiting for some market change? I don't know what they're waiting for, but it's not getting developed. So I'd, I'd like to look, look at that seriously and see, is there some way we can intervene? Is there something we can do?
Could I just follow up on that?
Sure.
So I noticed there's legislation this year, and you might want to check it out, I can't remember the bill numbers, that would actually extend the life of vesting tentative maps even more than now, right? And they can do it for years and years and years and now they want to extend it again. And I would say no to that. I would oppose that actively. Just as a follow up, but I'll, it's Harvey's turn and I'll go back.
I'm not done.
Yeah.
You might want me to be, but I'm not. Other, other short-term projects, easy fixes, maybe not so easy, but quick fixes. Some use of microgrids, solar plants, whatever, to increase our resiliency during an emergency state with energy. We have a new corp yard. We could be using that, filling it up with solar panels. We could be putting, look at a plan for microgrids around the city to see how we could utilize that as a source of energy during an emergency. The, I have one question. What do we need to finish the LCP? What do you need rather to finish it? How can we help? What could we give you that would make it easier or quicker?
Patience with the rest of the projects. We have what we need in terms of legal support. We've got the right staff in the room. We've, we know what we're doing. We're actually doing some very clever things right now. We're buying data that we didn't have before, for example. I think you'd be impressed, but these are what Catherine and I have discussed, your city attorney. We need deep thought. Most of the work that I have done on that plan has been at night, in the morning before work and on weekends and over winter breaks because it, it's really hard with, with a counter. So protecting two or three staff members for just a few months, we can wrap it up. We're in beautiful shape, but we just need to carve that out.
I think that's critical and I think that, you know, everybody on the council wants that to happen. So if there's a specific ask that you have, please do the asking because I think everybody on council is willing, willing, more than willing to, to do whatever we can.
We understand the priority and from there, I think the ask is, in speaking with the city manager and you're, you're going to see an initial pass at what we're recommending for a work plan, anticipating that you want affordable housing to stay as a multi-year priority. The work plan is structured to give time for the land use plan to finish and regardless of how exciting the other things are that we want to do, they just need to not start until we can finish our work plan, or excuse me, the LCP work.
Great. Well, I'm right on board with that. The thing that Councilmember Ruttick spoke to, tying the development of an ADU to affordability. I'd like to see us look at that and see how we can do that. I think that's going to be critical going forward. An ADU, two-bedroom ADU in El Granada is being advertised as, for rent at over $3,000 a month. It's unconscionable and it was certainly not the, the intention of council or staff to create luxury housing on the coast here when we developed, did all our work on ADUs. So let's see how we can rein that in and make that, make that an affordable option. The last thing that I want to mention that I didn't mention before is what Councilmember Mayor Eisen brought up, and that is banning all single-use plastic bottles, utensils, anything in the city of Half Moon Bay. You can't, no going into Safeway and buying a bottle of juice in plastic. No going into Safeway and buying a bottle of water in plastic. No buying 10 cases full of single-use plastic water-filled bottles. Crazy, crazy, crazy. Let's be a leader. Let's, let's make Half Moon Bay the place where you come when you want to live a sustainable lifestyle and as a tourist where you come. And if you are told, oh gee, we don't sell single-use plastic here, please bring your aluminum with you and reuse it, we're going to have less trash, we're going to have cleaner beaches, we're going to have less need for public works to be added all the time trying to keep ahead of it. So let's, let's do that as a priority and that's all for right now. And that's all for right now.
No, I just think that we should lump together these LCP update ideas, downtown vitality, keeping the coastal, small-town character that's been mentioned as the biggest priority. So if we wanted to have a fifth priority, I think helping staff with the LCP update to keep the small-town coastal feeling would be a sensible fifth priority.
Councilwoman Ruddock?
Yeah, back to affordable housing. At the symposium this weekend, we heard a presentation, not a presentation, actually, it was sitting at our dinner table, a council member from National City. And they are doing amazing things with affordable housing. It's a disadvantaged community. They have a large, low-income population, and they've done amazing things in getting affordable housing built. And they've actually moved on to building some cohousing, which I think we would be really interested in. And I would say, give a call to the city of National City and find out how they're doing it. I mean, they're getting loads of federal money, grants from the state. They just seem to have mastered the process. So I think it would be worthwhile checking in with them. I'm hoping that City Clerk continues the youth civic engagement during this election season. And I think if we can beef up our programs for, like, teenagers and young adults, I think that's always a good path. I'd like to suggest a list of projects that we might focus on. And I would start with, sort of, backup community power as an interim to potentially going to microgrids or some other longer-term solution. I would say a project to green up MacDutra Park, spruce up MacDutra Park. That seems to me to be low-hanging fruit. I think we want to prioritize and complete building stairs down to Poplar Beach. That seems to be a popular item with a lot of folks. And I would say a sign on Highway 92 pointing to downtown. You know, let's get that done.
A nice sign.
A nice sign. And then we heard from the chamber at the senior center listening session about their data gathering project. And, you know, I'd be willing to suggest giving some money to them to really beef up the information gathering. I'd like to know who's commuting, where they're commuting, who's coming into town to work. The census is going to provide some of that information, but I think it would be great to have a robust dataset of, you know, who's in Half Moon Bay, and what are they doing, and what is the ethnic makeup, and all that stuff. I think that if we're going to be making sound priority decisions in the future, we want to be working off that information. So, that's all I'd say.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yeah, I think the chamber could also get connected to commute.org to actually get some of that data, maybe even for free. So that would be great. In terms of, you know, this idea of, like, you know, the vacant land, and figuring out legal requirements to address that, you made me also remember that when it comes to vacant storefronts, some cities are already actually charging a tax on properties that stay vacant. I don't know.
San Francisco just passed one.
Yeah, so we probably have some good models, and then figure out if it's viable here, and run it by our, because every local small business would be interested in that scene vacant. So we could run it by them, and then put a little more pressure on some landlords, potentially. Or at least pilot something like that, see what that might look like. And I love the idea of making, having Half Moon Bay be a green vacation place. I think that's something we could work, again, with the chamber, what we could emphasize. And, yeah, that's great. I'll stop there.
Does anybody else want to say anything before we take a five-minute break, and just go through these for a second, then we'll go through the synthesizing exercise?
I don't know. It's 1:43.
Yeah, all right. Let's do a five-minute.
Let me make just one comment, because I think Deborah hit on it first, and so I just wanted to, as we go up there and synthesize, maybe just underscore that this is the direction maybe we'll go. So I think, I did hear the lines and between the lines, that maybe the five top broad categories, and there was certainly recognition that they're very broad, should be the four we already have, and a focus on the downtown revitalization. And then Deborah made the very important point that they're very broad, and so that doesn't feel very good, because, you know, we could, you know, we shouldn't, all the things you said, we could really narrow this down, and you could even give us staff more focus and say, no, these are under those broad categories, these are three or four things we want you to focus on. And I think that would be helpful, and we're willing to hear that. So, for example, I think Councilmember Penrose said, she listed some projects underneath those broad categories, and said, let's maybe try to get to two or three. So I think if that's okay, maybe we have the five categories, unless I hear otherwise. And then our exercise will be to go through and start, and circle all the ones, and then you guys can come back, and we can reread them back, and you could give us, I would say, three projects that are, again, they're going to be under one of those five categories. And then when we come back with the work plan, those will be focal points. How's that sound for a little thought during a five-to-10-minute break, and we'll come back and do that?
Vice Mayor, bro. Vice Mayor.
One last thing I forgot. Just because I know I have a short-term memory, and also we reinforce each other's memories nicely here. Jill, when it comes to resources for LCP, if you can, just make a quick list of some of the projects that, in other words, if you can script our expectations, these are the projects that might get a little slowed down, you might decide, hey, maybe you could borrow some other resources from some other teams. Whatever it takes, that's such a priority. Just ask away, let us know which things, projects, we'll know ahead of time not to be pushing on, so we can know which to slow down on.
I think you'll see that with our work plan. It is structured that way, and I'm being very honest with the city manager about what we can pull off.
Absolutely. And I can short-circuit that a little bit, too. So, for example, if when we come back, you guys choose three more specific priorities under those, if any one of those priorities that you guys pick, tasks, is under Jill's shop, I'm going to probably, as the city manager, push back a little bit, because that will come in direct conflict with the direction you gave us to focus on the LCP. So as an example.
That's perfect. All right, take a five-minute break, and we convene.
We're going to continue to bring back quarterly reports with tasks that we're working on under these headings, but we want, what we're asking is the council give us their top three, and we will absolutely make sure, of all the things that fit under here, we're going to elevate those three to our highest priorities under the priorities. So the 13 were, the idea to provide, use our Affordable Housing Fund to provide some kind of a grant program to people who want, are proposing ADUs, if they agree to put some kind of a deed restriction on it that limits the affordability to a certain level. We heard that from two, maybe even three, council members, so that's one. The idea to actually build a affordable housing apartment unit downtown, Mr. Rarbeck's idea is one. A home, building, I think, again, Councilmember Rarbeck mentioned the idea of tiny homes, but then also kind of put it into a broader category of providing some kind of a homeless shelter. So that is one. On the emergency preparedness, we heard a very specific idea that was kind of embedded in the idea that we should be working kind of ground-up as opposed to top-down, and the idea was to work closely with the CERT programs to actually provide walkie-talkies and have a whole program of communication for the CERT and the volunteers, neighborhood by neighborhood. So that was an idea that we thought we'd put on the list. The idea that kind of came up late about putting some kind of a bond or time limit on entitlements that would force developers to actually proceed and develop the projects as opposed to just getting their entitlements and flipping it, or sitting on the project, that was one. We heard this several times under the sustainability priority, to really focus on electricity, storage, panels, generation, microgrids. So we put that together, because we heard it several times. We heard from Councilmember Ruddock promoting volunteerism and getting a more robust volunteer program. We heard a very specific project from at least two council members to do a refresh of MacDutra Park. Green MacDutra is what we called it. We heard very specifically, kind of, maybe a quick win, maybe not, we'll see how Caltrans responds, but to get a very attractive and clear sign on 92 pointing the way to downtown. That obviously follows under the town center priority. Chamber data project, oh, this was the, I think this was Councilmember Ruddock. Was that from the chamber? That was from the chamber? Okay. I got my notes wrong on that. Okay, the chamber and that, okay. Continue the FLCA program. We just started that last year. That's on the list. The next one, traffic incentive programs, came from Councilmember Brownstone. We have a question mark next to this one. Was this a general comment about the approach to TDM, or was there a specific project on this one?
Yeah, it was around incentivizing, you know, programs incentivizing ride-sharing, and working with the school district around the high school traffic.
Okay. We'll leave it on the list.
Yep.
The deliverable is hard for us to pinpoint, but we'll leave it up there. And if it becomes one of the top three, then we'll scratch our heads and work on that. But it's about providing incentives to encourage more people to carpool with a focus on school traffic, primarily the students, I assume. Is that a good restatement?
They're not mutually, yeah, I mean, they could be mutually exclusive, actually, so ride-pooling generally for everybody.
Okay. And then the 13th one was the ban on single-use plastic water bottles, and not just water, but all. So we're already working on the ordinance for single-use plastic at restaurants. That's already in the works, so that didn't come up, because we are going to proceed and bring an ordinance back. But the idea here is to ban the sale and use of single-use plastic drinking bottles that are sold at grocery stores and the like. So that is the list of the 13 more specific task projects, call them what you will, and what we'd like to do is have the council find their top three, and then staff will commit to folk, to make sure that those are a focal point under our five priorities. Matthew?
Can I just chime in, mostly, I mean, for everybody's sake, but the mayor's sake as well, because he mentioned specifically, he wanted to make sure Carter Park was acknowledged here. And we had added it to the list, and we crossed it out. It's not because we're giving up. I think this is a perfect example of something that is now institutionalized. Like, we are deep into that project, we're going to move it forward. Obviously, construction of the project is another deal, and based on what we've heard today, obviously, the city's not just going to come up with funding for it. So our focus, as the environmental work and the planning completes this year, will then shift to working with the friends of Half Moon Bay Parks and Rec, and our grant-writing folks, to seek money for that project. So I just wanted to point that out. It's institutionalized. We're doing it, no matter what you say at this point. Just kidding. No, unless you tell us to stop, but.
And then one final comment, before you start deliberating and trying to come up with your top priorities from that list. Jill just mentioned, and it goes back to several comments were made, there's a priority that's kind of higher than everything here. That's how I took it. And that is getting the LCP amendment done. So it's not here, because it's higher than everything, and it is institutionalized, and Jill is doing everything, we're all doing everything to get it done, and that was the message. And so she just made the point that as we came up with, as you came up with this new focus on downtown, town center, that is very much related to her completion of the LCP and so forth. So we wanted to make sure that that point was clear as well. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, on your approach to kind of coming up with the council's collective priorities on this list of 13.
How do you guys want to go about this? You want to go up there and mark them yourselves? Should you grab a pen each and go up there? You want to talk about each one? Go down the list? And just kind of cross them off and kind of...
I picked out five, not three, but five.
Let's start with that, then. Let's go for it.
You know, some of these, well, plastics ban, single-use plastics ban, that's a big one for me, and I think that that helps us in a bunch of ways. I think it helps us with marketing Half Moon Bay, making a brand for Half Moon Bay, which is going to help us in an economic downturn, maybe. Maybe people will say, oh gee, I don't know what to do this weekend, I don't want to go anyplace, but I'm going to go to Half Moon Bay, because they're doing this new green Half Moon Bay thing. I don't know. I'd like to have us working on the storage of electricity. That comes under our emergency preparedness thing. The walkie-talkies is another one that I'm hot for. And that's a short-term, that's not a big-term thing. That's a little project, so I'm up to really four and a half projects, not five. I'd like us to really work on time limit on development, whatever that entails. And along with that, the deed-restricted ADUs, but both of those things come, are going to come after the LCP. So, you know, I think that we could be looking at them, but maybe we need to do the LCP and see what comes out of that first. So those are my top four and a half.
All right. Let's go down the line. Councilmember Ruddock?
So my group would be sign for downtown. Backup, or, you know, battery power, and ultimately, microgrids or some other long-term Green up MacDutra Park. And deed-restricted ADUs.
Harvey?
Deed-restricted ADUs.
Hit your microphone, yeah.
Deed-restricted ADUs. Affordable housing development, I think that's what it says, right?
Affordable housing development downtown is your vision of a three-story apartment building somewhere in the downtown?
Correct. And that's three. I'll stop there.
Vice Mayor?
Deed-restricted ADUs, plastic bottle ban, and MacDutra Park greening up.
All right, this is good. I can deal with a couple of these. So the plastics, sounds like relatively all across the board, so I'm all in on that. It doesn't have, for me, it doesn't have to be a plastics ban.
But again, the next step forward on that, whatever it may be, but that's the best I can come up with right now. I really like the MacDutra greening. I feel like that's relative, I mean, it's going to cost a little money, so we have to worry about that aspect of it. But there's already been a bunch of money put into that project, so to kind of take it to the next level hopefully wouldn't cost that much. And could make, I really don't know of many people in this town that consider that area their town, you know? And I would love to take that back and turn it into a Half Moon Bay feel. I don't know what that means, but... And then I'm fine with deed-restricted ADUs or storage electricity, just to be able to talk about the ones that I agree with other council members on. And I'll leave it there just so we can try to build consensus. Oh, and the downtown signs, automatic, easy, can make that one happen. And as long as Harvey, Harvey needs to approve of the sign, though, before it's brought up, because this is...
Excellent suggestion.
Yes, this is...
Now, I'm the artist in the group. I beg to differ.
Well, Harvey thinks of himself as an artist. Does that count for anything?
I want to say something about MacDutra, and I'm wondering if that ought to be part and parcel of our town center plan, rather than a separate issue. I'm just wondering, you know, if we're going to do parklets up and down, if we're going to do tree planting or greening or whatever we do in town center, maybe MacDutra could be part of it. On the other hand, a quick fix like putting some flowering plants in and painting or putting a mural in, that could be a quick fix. I just wonder if it's not part of town center.
I vote for the quick fix as opposed to town center. I think it could be low-hanging fruit. Let's do it.
Town center is one of our big priorities.
It is, but I don't want to wait and make it part of some plan. I want to like do it this year.
Gotcha.
And it's funny that you mentioned the parklets and all that. The parklets, that was such an interesting, I'm sorry going to go off on a little tangent here for a second, so just bear with me. That came up and then it was so quickly, yeah, there was reasons, exactly. There, you know, it all got destroyed pretty quickly or whatever. It didn't happen. And I like the concept and there's a part of me still, and, you know, we would have to talk with the business community and all the different aspects that are involved in this, but that still, I would, there's a part of me, I'm not sure if every day it would work, but would love to see downtown Half Moon Bay be with no cars entirely in downtown. And we've talked about the parking, we've done the parking studies. We have found that there is sufficient parking in Half Moon Bay on even the busiest weekends to be able to support it. And I just feel like in terms of making downtown, you know, I think it's lovely to see the communities where there is no parking and there's, or there's no driving on Main Street and there's walkability and we could bring chairs out into the middle of the street in the ideal and turn it into a different feel of all downtown Half Moon Bay. But that's way out there, I'm just throwing it out.
Certainly, certainly an option that can be studied with the grant and the town plan that we got. I mean, it's going to come up with, it's going to look at different options and part of the options it'll look at will be circulation.
And obviously, that would be through the chamber and we'd get all the businesses involved because, you know, I feel like business input would be absolutely paramount to something like that, obviously. But just letting that be known.
So, Mr. Mayor, as a recap, I think choosing five was a good idea that Councilmember Penrose had because it starts to give more opportunities for the top three to rise to the top. So as of right now, Councilmember Penrose chose five, Councilmember Ruddick chose five, and you chose five. So I think we should allow Councilmember Brownstone and Rarback to add two more each.
Go for it, boys.
One. I like the idea...
I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Rarback, Vice Mayor Brownstone, I'm sorry.
Go with one more, the electronic grid.
Electricity storage.
Electricity storage, sorry. Yep. Thanks.
And Councilmember Rarback?
Oh, come on.
Currently, we voted for the housing grants for ADUs, that idea, the effort of building up...
The greening of MacDutra as a quick win. And banning plastics. And I just want to make it clear that what we had at the last council meeting was a banning of plastic ware that's for, at restaurants, you know, and takeout. And so that's not what we're talking about here, okay? We're talking about a more serious ban of all single-use plastics, including plastic water bottles, so...
And we assume large water bottles as well?
Yeah, yeah. Yep, yep.
And just to clarify, because there's some legal research involved with this newest priority, did you want to continue to move forward with the single-use, the social foodware ordinance as directed? And then this would come along sort of in tandem or in sequence? Yeah. Thank you. And I did start looking into this, and there actually are some communities in Massachusetts that have banned water, plastic water bottles, and even one that's considering a ban on soda bottle, you know, basically equivalent soda bottles as well. There are not, as far as I know, any in California yet. The airport is somewhat different in that it's a city property, so the city has banned the sale on its own property.
Robert, I think you still owe us one more.
Brownstone?
What's the...
So continue, you know, that, I think we're going to, you know, I'm not sure that needed to make it up here because I think it is our intention to continue that another year. So I wouldn't necessarily waste your vote there.
Can I vote for him?
No.
Then I'll go for the affordable housing downtown development. Welcome.
And then one that's near and dear to my heart, obviously, it's still not up there entirely at all, but is that whole, and I know we're working on it still, but that bike and pedestrian masterplan piece, to be able to really kind of move that to the forefront and actually see some bike lanes in Half Moon Bay.
Sure. And to that point, again, we didn't, that did not make this list because we didn't hear it or didn't think it was important. But it came up, it's a broader part of the program of TDM, so yes, we're working on it. Yes, we want to promote bike lanes and streets that are more pedestrian scale and friendly. So it wasn't like one specific project, like put a bike lane on, although you did mention the road up to the school, so we'll acknowledge that. So not forgotten, but just wasn't on this list.
And I think that one goes in well with eventually the North Highway 1 improvement. I mean, it's like literally in lockstep with one another as they come about, you would think.
Explain to me what that affordable housing development downtown, what does that mean? I mean, that's one of our priorities, but what does it mean?
Councilmember Rarback, this, you can explain it better than I can. This is the idea of the city promoting and potentially even being the lead on development of a three-story apartment building in the downtown, either on the church parcel or some other parcel that would make, that would start to make the project pencil and work and something that could actually be developed in the downtown. In other words, as of this moment, the private sector is not building affordable apartment buildings in the downtown. It's not happening. So the idea here is to nudge, push, subsidize, do whatever it takes to take a more leading role to promote and develop some type of a very affordable apartment complex in the downtown. This is the idea that we have been working on without much success for the past six to eight months.
Yeah, I don't understand how it's any different from what we're doing right now.
It is what we're doing.
Yeah. So I don't see it as a short-term fix, kind of.
A project.
A project. I don't see it as a project. It's already a project.
True. But every, again, everything competes with everything else and we do ultimately have a capacity to get things done. So we have to make decisions about where we focus our time. So yes, we are, and to the extent we continue to work on it, then we're not working, then we don't have time to work on other things.
It seems to me we have limited property in the downtown to develop, certainly limited property for a 30 to 50-unit apartment complex. And we're already working on all of those properties, trying to get them developed. I don't see how putting that as a project is going to, I think it's going to take away from other projects because it's already being done. I just don't quite understand. It's, of course, a priority for me, but whether it's a 50-unit building or whether it's 10 triplexes, it wouldn't matter to me. Getting affordable housing built is critical, so...
Nothing's going to happen.
No, I don't get it as a, why it's on that list.
All that being said, I still have no problem calling it out as a highlight so that if it doesn't happen, then it feels like we haven't maybe put some time into it. So it creates a spotlight on it. And so when an opportunity comes along, you know, we can hopefully grab it. But I like having it on there. I mean, I hear everything you're saying, but I still kind of like having a spotlight on it.
Well, it is in a general category.
So I'm going to, I think, I think we've got our, do you need any more direction from us?
I do. So we wanted three. Two rose to the top. You all, you voted for them, so I circled them. Pursuing this idea of providing some type of incentive to homeowners who want to build ADUs if they're willing to deed-restrict them for affordable is something that got unanimous votes. Also, the plastic, pursuing a ban on plastics was unanimous. There were two that got four votes, and so it would be nice if the council could pick between those two. One was the greening of MacDutra and the other was the working on electricity, storage, solar panels, microgrids, that subject. So is there any...
My vote's for four, not three.
Let's just stick with the four.
Stick with four?
Stick with the four.
Stick with four.
And we'll just leave it there. So we don't even have to go through the exercise.
We'll go with four.
Yeah, we're going four. We're not going five.
We will certainly do that. Just the reminder that we, you can put as many things on the list as you want and we will work diligently on all of them, but it does not change the capacity of what we are able to do. We have great staff. We work as hard as we can. And making everything a number-one priority does not make everything a number-one priority. But we will do the best we can.
Well, I would vote for, you know, power backup. I mean, we're going to be headed toward a wild wildfire season and probably more power shut...
We're going to focus on both of them. We're going with four.
We're going to go with four, okay. And greening MacDutra? All right. Okay.
You think you can add a sign for downtown in there? What do you think, Bob? We always have to make Debbie happy. I mean, come on, you know?
I'll also mention on that one that we actually already have in the CIP revisiting the downtown directional signage plan that that would fit into. Having it as part of that plan might make that not happen quite as quickly because we want to engage with the business community and develop a really comprehensive plan. So we'll call that a half.
Yeah, this could be over a year, but yes, I agree with Matthew. If we can do it isolated, we will, but we should put it back in the context of the downtown sign.
All right. Can I give you four others?
No, I think we're good. I think we're good. Bob, you want to take us home?
I think we are very clear. We appreciate the fact that the council came up with the same four broad categories. Back to the original question, what are staff priorities? We agree. That's what we heard. Those four that we already had are a lot more work ahead of us. And they may be, like I said, they may be on the list for two, three, five years. And then the one you added, we really appreciated. We all agree with that. I've been talking about economic development and the downtown for some time. Jill has. It does relate to the LCP, so we're glad that one made the list. And I think this new exercise that we didn't do last year has some merit. These priorities are broad and go on for a long time, and there are a lot of competing ideas of what we should focus on under those broad categories. And so I think this next one deeper dive was helpful. I hope you guys appreciated it. We kind of did that on the spot today, so that was not necessarily planned. But when we come back, we'll come back in, Matthew, I don't know, a month or so with what we heard and the plan. And you'll see other things on that list of the work plan, but those four will be prominent underneath the categories. That's the message we got.
And then, and I know you guys usually do this, but we've talked about in the past, I forgot what the, I forgot what it's called, but we've looked at doing kind of like a moving-along graph online. What is it called?
GAN chart.
A GAN chart? Thank you. GAN chart? Yes.
You were wanting to take yours online, is that right? Comment on that and...
Well, let me, yeah, and let me, I'll just quickly, and then in the ideal, when you, I think it would be best if, as you're bringing them up, I know each one of these topics has so many like subcategories like you're talking about. And I almost wonder if we could prioritize those or have staff prioritize those. So we have a sense of what's being worked on and then we can see the progress made on each one of those. Because you guys all now have like, what, a month to brainstorm all this stuff as well? But go ahead.
Yeah, I think going back to when we presented the strategic plan update a few meetings ago, and we showed you this tool we have with OpenGov to make improvements to the online presence, I think that is, one of the things we want to do is to be able to, like a dashboard, make it really easy to see what's happening and where we're going. So we'll prioritize that as we work with the vendor to see what capabilities are there and be able to add something like that.
That's awesome. Thanks. Councilmember Ruddick?
Yes, so it's not on our list finally, but I think that there's no reason why when we're talking to Supervisor Horsley that we can't get the conversation going about community health care and what to do about...
It is absolutely on the agenda. We're up to six items.
I have one last idea, and it, I haven't spoken to anybody on council about it, but I know they're all going to be behind it. The month of November seems to be not a terribly busy month in terms of council priorities or staff priorities. Am I right about that? It's election, but besides election, I'd like us, I would like us after election to pick a date and call it, and call it Staff Appreciation Day and have that day a party at the Ted Adcock where the community is invited to meet everybody on staff and we celebrate staff. What do you think about that?
And the commissions or separate?
Just staff.
Just staff.
Just staff appreciation.
We like parties. We like parties and we like being appreciated.
Yeah, I think it'd be a great thing. We could use our city council funds for that, for that party, so it wouldn't cost the staff anything.
We could use our new sponsorship policy to get sponsors for that.
We could do that. So, can we pick a date? Okay, good.
All right, well, thank you all for coming, thank you all for your ideas, I thought that was a great session, I liked the subcategories, and I look forward to seeing you all on the 17th.
I just really quick want to thank all of our staff that's here right now. This has been a whirlwind couple of weeks for us, and we have a lot of staff, I won't call people out by name, but you've seen them working really, really hard and having to put aside other things that they're working on, and we're just really grateful to that. And I think it showed in the quality of the listening sessions, this meeting, so we're just really grateful to everybody for the work that they've done the last couple of weeks.
And one final comment on that one, let's not forget Matthew himself, he is staff, so that included him, but I just had to mention that he is, with everything else that we're doing this week, and it has been a little crazy, he is actually going up to Sacramento tomorrow. He got asked by the League of Cities to go to a special hearing on homelessness and testify, so he is being asked as an expert from a city to go testify at this, I think there's three hearings, it's a special hearing on this subject. So, he is going to be running soon, preparing his presentation, and meeting with other people that are a part of this group, and making a presentation in Sacramento.